It's almost. Good evening, everybody. It's six P M. April twenty third. Twenty twenty four. Welcome to the Town Council Virtual Workshop. If you could please join me with in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation. Indivisible. With liberty.
Thank you, everybody for joining us on tonight's agenda. We have special present presentation of all our project updates and it's Robert, are you going to present?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do have Mike Woodward and Hal from Kimley Horn Associates on the line. We also have Michael Laura, John Fitzgibbon. So if there's any technical questions, they'll be able to address those. But tonight, the intent is just to go over some updates on the various projects that we're working on. You know, some of the projects that aren't listed are town hall. We're continuously working on that. And some other projects as well, whether it's going to be through part of emergency management, FEMA or other jurisdictions. So we're continuously working on various projects at any given time, but this is the main projects that we hope to get started sooner than later. With that said, I'll get to the first slide. And I apologize because I have the chat up and also the participants up as well. So we have the local mitigation strategy, which is the biggest funding source or one of the biggest funding sources that we currently have. And I'll get into what exactly that is. Then we're going to update. So West Second Avenue, the Bessie Basin Butler Basin. Trail Phase One with the pedestrian trip bridge. Old Dirt Main Dirt Main Rose Property. Wyndham Road and Main Street Roundabout Chase Main Intersection Improvements Sixth Main Roundabout Improvements. The Central Water Phase, the North Phase, the South Phase, and also the wastewater master plan. And feel free to stop me wherever if you have any questions. So the local mitigation strategy is comprised of the county and other governmental jurisdictions within its plan to prepare for natural disasters. These projects are funded by FEMA and require a twenty five percent match. So the town works with Orange County in order to get projects listed in their C I P and try to get those into funding categories. These typically include projects that the town without these funds will not be able to proceed with. So if a natural disaster occurs within Orange County and an emergency declaration has been issued, funds are allocated to the county as a whole based on need. And then each disaster will have a different amount allocated attached to it. So however, if one jurisdiction doesn't fully allocate the monies from FEMA, then the other communities may apply for funding. And one of the good things that I think that staff and our engineers have done is to negotiate and work with Orange County LMS to make sure that our projects are on their C I P list. Not only on their C I P list, but to be ranked pretty high. So if something happens or should occur, we're able to get those funds for these projects. And the three that or the four that we are three, I'm sorry, that we had in the first hurricane that came through was pretty much Bessie Basin, Butler Basin, and also West Second Avenue. So some of the projects that we currently have in the LMS is going to be the Lake Down retaining wall improvements. That estimated cost is about one point three million. So again, if the town is awarded funds to the LMS program, we would be responsible for twenty five percent of that. The Fifth Avenue Lake Street retaining wall improvements, that's about six fifty seven. Again, we're hoping to get those funded through Orange County LMS should another emergency occur. And for the Lake Down retaining wall, this is on Sixth Avenue closer to the Orange County Boat Ramp. What we're trying to do and hopefully you can see my cursor here is once we have large rains, the lakefront starts washing away close to the right away edge. So we're trying to shore that up and currently based on the fact that it is a major roadway that's considered through the state of Florida, Orange County, the funds are going to be really hard to get. So we're trying every avenue that we can. And then Fifth Avenue and Lake Street retaining wall improvements. This is something that we currently have approved relative to the not riprap, but the the concrete wall that we're putting over here for the seawall. And you see in the green highlighted area, that's where the seawall is going to be going. But you can see there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And we're currently negotiating with Department Mercy Management to fund the sidewalk improvements and also hopefully some roadway improvements as well to shore that up to make sure that if another storm comes through, we're going to be prepared for it. Some of the areas that we're working on is Fourth Ave and Magnolia Street drainage improvements. Now, this was originally looked at as part of the Bessie Basin. We didn't have enough funds to take care of all that. But with the cost of three hundred thousand dollars, if we get good bids, we were able to fund that or self fund that. And then also most jurisdictions, they have the same thing that we have is the retrofit and upgrade the flood control devices for new and existing structures to make sure that when stormwater comes through, we're able to put it where it needs to go and it can either perk or get off the roadway so people can access safely. West Second Avenue Drainage Improvements. Again, this project has been going on for quite some time, but hopefully we're closer to the end. We're still waiting for the state to release additional funds and we can get into that. And Mike can answer any questions that you may have, but the project extends from Main Street to the cul-de-sac at the end of West Second Avenue. We had to do surveys. We had to do a ton of public meetings and individual meetings with all the residents that are along that route to answer the questions and to show them exactly where the project is going to go and what the project is going to look like and how it would directly impact their adjacent property. So the design is a hundred percent complete. The F D E M agreement is executed. The design funds for faith Phase One, which is the actual just design that was funded. And so we're waiting for the funding of the second phase, which is going to be the construction. So our original estimate back in, was it twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, Mike?
Twenty twenty nineteen, I believe.
Twenty nineteen. So our original estimate again was two point five million dollars. So our portion would have been about six hundred thirty three thousand. When the bids came in with twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four numbers, it came at four point six eight million. So our pretty much our portion jumped from six hundred thirty three thousand to point one point one seven million. The water for the estimate of West Second Avenue was five seventy one. And the bids came in at eight fifty three. Now there's two funding sources that we can tap into for the water portion. And that would be the ARPA funds, the the COVID funds the town received as well as the central phase of state appropriations that we received. So again, the town was awarded an H M G P grant and that's a hazard mitigation grant program from the LMS system for the hurricanes due to the bids coming in well over original budget. Staff is working with F D E M on a budget increase to cover that cost. In order for the project to be remain viable, there needs to be a cost benefit analysis, which equals to a one. Currently on our internal estimates, we're at a point ninety eight. However, we can see what F E M comes in. Hopefully it's at a higher rate. And should the number come in less than one, we'll continue to work with F D M N or F D E M on the reduction of some aspects of the project to maintain the financial viability. Tony and I attended a H M G P grant workshop that was put on by D E M. And they said that they continuously work with local jurisdictions to make sure that they hit that one. They want to get projects done and they understand that the longer it's delayed, the more the costs go up. Now, if you are trying to self fund it without the C B A, then you lose the H M G P grant, which sounds counterproductive because other jurisdictions too, they have the money that they want to put towards these projects to put towards the cost overrun. But that still throws the C B A off. So we're not able to self fund this or the difference unless the C B A still maintains that one designation. So we'll continue to work with F D E M on that. And here's just a quick look at what the design improvements and drainage improvements would be. I think everybody's familiar with West Second Avenue in its current condition as far as mostly a one lane roadway with alligator crackings on the sides as well as, you know, some potholes. But what this will do is add the curbing on the side, improve the stormwater improvements and also make it a width that two cars can pass safely. And also, you know, some of the parking where people have landscapers, they'll be able to go ahead and still park on those areas and there'll be minor swells on the other side. And this is just showing you the design that we have for West Second Avenue where it takes you from the cul-de-sac all the way over to Main Street. And I'll be doing a project update workshop with the public as well. So in case they have any questions or concerns relative to a specific project that might directly impact them, we're more than happy to meet with them and talk to them about that. And here's where it ends over at Main Street. So the timeline that we have is we're working on the state contracting, which should take about three months. Construction plan and technical specs, two months bidding, two months, construction twelve months. Local inspections, compliance, three months. And then the final inspections, three months and then close out two months. So it's not a short process. It's a long process. Most people are worried about the construction impacts and we'll make sure whoever is the winning contractor will have pre-con meetings like we do with the public to make sure that we're addressing their needs where if they're elderly, they have certain deliveries they need to get to and work on a M O T to make sure that people still have or maintain traffic on that roadway. So their lives are impacted very minimally. Now to the Bessie Basin. Again, here's the initial design. And then the various slides that we have are the slides that we submitted to Town Council as well as the residents that live in that area that are going to be directly impacted. And you can see the rain garden that is going to be a suit of swale close to Lake Bessie over here by the boat ramp. And then here's the curve. And then the other curve. And then here's all the way to Sixth Avenue. And we're planning for these projects, we're planning to put potable water systems within these areas at the same time. And here's a diagram of the rain garden that we had. Kimley Horn Associates take a look at with one of their experts to make sure that whatever we plant in there is going to be data friendly and also helps with the water. Now for Butler Basin, that's pretty much lined in with Bessie and West Second Avenue. I think the total that we received at the H M G P grant was a little over three million dollars. Again, but for these monies, the town would have to look at other revenue sources, whether it's increasing taxes, increasing assessments. But I think staff's been really good at trying to find out where we can get the most bang for our buck when it comes to getting funds for a lot of these projects. The Butler Basin timeline, again, state contracting, three months, construction plan, two months bidding, two months. Construction twelve months inspections, three. Final inspections, three, and then close out compliance, two. So total period of performance is twenty seven months. And that should line in with Bessie. We just didn't include Bessie because we're still waiting on the state contract with that. The Ward Trail, which I get a lot of calls in addition to Bessie Butler and West Second Avenue. This phase of the project extends from North Avenue to Park Avenue. The multi-modal pathway will meander within the right away. The railroad right away that the town acquired. Phase one also includes a prefabric fabricated pedestrian bridge. And the enhancements also include new lighting benches and landscaping. So the town received the following financial commitments, the federal earmark from Congresswoman Demmings was seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars non matching. State appropriations, we received a million dollars non matching and we can still utilize some ARPA funds should we have any leftover to help with any cost overruns. So the proposed cost is about two million dollars. And the C E I is about one twenty. And then we also included landscaping and a twenty percent contingency, which is about one sixty. The design is ninety percent complete. We were working on the cultural assessment, which was completed. And we sent it off to Shippa and I believe to E P. And we're just waiting for the state to give the thumbs up. And then once they do, then we can go ahead and finalize the designs and then submit it for bid. And this shows Phase One where it takes you to north all the way to the school. And that we're staying within the railroad right away. This shows the existing condition of the railroad right away right now. And we've worked very closely with tree board to make sure that any tree impacts were very minimal. And this shows you pretty much what the conceptual design would be with a swale closer to Sixth Avenue with again some vegetation. And then a longer area that would create a landscape buffer between the existing residents and the multimodal path. And when we worked it out with and had public meetings, this is the design as far as conceptual, what it would look like once complete. And this is from Sixth Avenue looking west. The pedestrian bridge that we looked at. This is what it is.
It was Robert really quick that the image was that was right by South Lake Butler Boulevard facing and looking sort of to the northeast a little bit.
Okay.
The trail's running sort of north is sort of the left kind of top of the page.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Small clarification, buddy.
And this is called a bowstring, Mike?
That's correct. Bridge Brothers Bow String. We looked at several. And and the only difference from the image here is that it would be black as as determined by the town council.
Right. And we chose black to match the existing signage that we currently have in town and also with the rust look, it does, if you rub against it, it will transfer over to your clothing. But that was something that Town Council approved relative to the color of the bridge. Once again, once we get approval from the state, then we'll work with them on fabricating the bridge, delivery of the bridge and construction of the bridge. But again, we're basing this off of dollars that were in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So we do anticipate the cost going up a little bit. But we do have the reserves and budgets to accommodate that.
And the the two million dollar cost estimate is updated as of about six months ago. So we're still continuing to see escalation, but it's a lot better than if it was from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So to right around two point one, once you add in all the C E Is is what we're thinking.
Thanks, Mike. And we do put, I think, a hundred. What's that?
The C E Is are what contingencies?
Oh, construction engineering and inspections, which since this one was because of the federal dollars in the in the state appropriations, that's being conducted by one of the C E I firms that's approved by F D O T District Five. So but but at least they were kind enough to kind of manage that portion of it so that the town doesn't have to go out and bid and select their own. So that part at least will be easy to facilitate.
So are we still looking at a summer timeline for install of this if it if Shippo gets back to us with a cultural assessment?
We'll probably look at it fall if not.
Yeah.
A little later than that. And the reason why is because, you know, when you have other jurisdictions involved like F D O T and, you know, the feds, then it does delay the project a little bit, but we're hoping by at least the end of this fiscal year to get started on it.
Okay. And you said it is black, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Old Dirt Main. Now, this is the area that goes from north all the way to the canal. This is something that we worked with the residents on. We worked out several property swaps for the right away. And then we gave them the fifteen feet additional area to their adjacent properties. We're just waiting on one more swap in order for this project to move forward. It's just been hard because the property owners are always out of town and the people that are living there are just renters. But what this would do is shift old Dirt Main to the east. And it would pave it. And if you're familiar with this area, you know that it gets very boggy and very muddy, not only from people sprinklers and stormwater runoff. But it's just a low area, especially when it gets closer to the canal. So they understand the need for it. And that's something that Town Council approved as far as a paving project based on that need and the safety concerns for this area. So again, it would extend from north all the way to the canal. And the water line would be adjacent to the western portion of the property.
Which property is the one you don't have swapped for yet?
Denoyl.
Okay.
This is the property that's over close by tenth at the old Ward property. We call it the Rose Property because we've been working with Molly and Bob on the property because again, when we worked out the swaps and the reason why we really needed this swap was number one, Tenth Avenue was actually privately held and we could have done a prescriptive easement or something like that. But it was a lot easier to work with this property or that subsequently bought the Ward property to do a property swap. So we can not only have control of the actual right away, but also do some stormwater improvements in this area. So what the road would do, it would just meander a little bit towards the east and then move back over to the west. We have worked out an easement with the Molly and Bob over here in this corner. Because it does encroach on their property a little bit. But when we subsequently acquire the right aways over here, then we'd be able to move the road further away from the Rose Property. We're selectively going after some of those areas. It doesn't make sense for me to do a property swap. Let's say with this property, because again, it would bump out here and then I would just keep meandering. So we're looking at various segments that make sense. And they're usually closer to the intersections. The Winter Romero Road and Main Street Roundabout. Again, this is the conceptual design and Town Council approved the actual design at the last Town Council meeting. Over here is Marina Bay. This is their signage. And as part of the part of the negotiated deal for the swaps of property, the town would go ahead and put entrance signs over in the northeast and the southeast areas. And then the road approaching would come down here now. Currently is a four way stop, which creates a lot of metering metering. And you know, in the best scenario, we would want the money for Sixth Avenue Main Street to be funded first before we did improvements at Wyndham Road and Main and also Chase and Main. But it didn't work out that way through state appropriations. So while we have the money, we might as well make these improvements while we can because the price is just going to get more expensive and we don't know if we'd ever get those state appropriations again. So I do anticipate once this is completed that there may be some issues at Sixth and Main, but at least we can start saving money for that project and not put it towards these two projects because of the savings that we're receiving from those two appropriations. The Chase and Main intersection improvements, what we have proposed here, it does show a roundabout, but we've also discussed the possibility of having a continuous right turn lane and the possibility of a continuous left turn with the possibility of having stop signs on twelfth. On, sorry, because of Main Street and then twelfth over here on the east side of Main Street. So we just received or once the governor signs the budget, then we'd be able to move forward design and then receive public input and actually come up with a concept plan design after that and work on construction to make sure that we're relieving the tension over there in that intersection. Six and Main Roundabout Improvements. Again, these are concepts, what we look at to accommodate the widening or reducing the area of the actual roundabout. And when I say reducing, we would look at the existing paved area or pave pave the pavers area with the tree in the middle, reducing that a little bit to accommodate some of this through traffic. It'd be similar to the one that I believe you see on Roberson. And again, the intent is to make sure that if people are going north to south or south to north, they can continuously going. And then if you're coming south and then getting onto sixth, you have that other lane through here. So it's not going to relieve the traffic, but hopefully it reduces the amount of time that we do have traffic. And that is because again, you know, with the other jurisdictions that are approving a lot of these developments, they're not, you know, anticipating the impacts on smaller jurisdictions like ours. And the only way to really relieve that would be to widen Main Street, which we would never do. And again, if we did that, then we'd have to look at turning the roadways back over to Orange County. So this is what we came up with as far as a conceptual design for those two areas.
Hey, Robert.
Yes, sir.
Robbed you. Great job, by the way. Is there any consideration to opening up that road in front of the P D to allow traffic to go in and out of there from that circle or at least off of six instead of everybody having to go all the way around the block every time they want to go in there or come out of there?
We can take a look at that. I think the issue might be the access points with this little median that's over here. Because they would have to come around, then come back around and then you have cars coming this way. So it might be a safety issue, but we can definitely take a look at that when we're coming up with the concepts.
Okay, yeah, because the I know in front of Town Hall, it's open into the intersection. It's the same road. You know, it's the same road as far as, you know, the linear wise. So right, from that side. So just, I'm just saying, every time somebody comes in or leaves anything downtown, whether it's the P D or the admin building or your office, they got to go all the way around the block to get there instead of coming in off of the Main Street.
Yes, sir. I'm very familiar with that and everybody uses Forrest to get onto that that road or to the parking lot. So we'll definitely take a look at that when we get the monies for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, because that was something we looked at back when we actually did the original design for the downtown roundabouts. Because we actually looked at, should that be a access point or should it not? And our concern was with the amount of pedestrian traffic and people that walk to Farmer's Market and everything else down that road, that it would actually open up another artery. And so we were very concerned about that in the design. And so just as an F Y I, that's kind of a a point that we looked at through the design of our initial roundabout.
Okay. Construction. I'd like it to be considered only because it is a lot of traffic going in and out of there and it's it's just you know, coming off of Main Street would seem more practical for, you know, the business downtown area as opposed to going all the way around the block to get to it.
I get it. My fear is that when you open up those arteries, then you have a lot of more cut through traffic taking a left. And then using that as a gateway to get to the roundabout to get out of town. So we had just had to be careful about those things as we look at traffic flow.
Sure, thanks, John.
I remember a while ago, some discussion about moving the entrance for the library further west on Sixth Avenue. So was that part of the roundabout discussions back then or was that part of the discussions when the new town admin offices were going in?
You talking about the the access off of Sixth Avenue?
Yeah, there was talk about closing, like, you know, basically closing the entrance to the library's parking lot from where it is now and being moved over to like the last spot on the west side, southwest corner of that parking lot. I remember it being talked about maybe four years ago, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Finish, please.
Well, I just don't remember what ended up happening with that. If that was part, I thought it was part of the town admin plans.
It was that we were in discussion. We weren't going to, if I remember right, it was, we were just going to add another entrance to the parking lot. Because it's directly across from the P D's entrance to their to their back lot. Tried to alleviate the people coming out on old on old Dirt Main in front of Town Hall. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was during the admin discussions.
Yeah, and to. Yeah, and to to expand on that, you know, one of the things as we started putting the budget numbers together, coming into COVID and all the other craziness. It was something that we couldn't afford at the time when we were doing the new town facilities. So it's still, you know, a design that's done. It's just something that, you know, the town can think about it doing in the future.
Okay, I just couldn't remember why it.
I think it got cut Brandy because we couldn't afford it as we were going through all the value engineering and trying to figure out. With all the increase in pricing and the craziness in the market.
Okay.
To do this. And so that became a value engineering item.
And it's just, I believe when we take a look at the refurbishment of that parking lot. Because I believe it was an old tennis court and you can see some of the crackings that we currently have. We're taking a look at that. And one of the things I'm working with L R P is to. Contract with Wade Trim or another vendor to go ahead and do a master plan for the town square. Which would include this parking area.
Okay.
The last one we did, I believe, was maybe in two thousand twelve and that was done by Canaan Associates. And I think that one is clearly outdated.
Okay, thank you.
The portable water system. Again, Orange County Utilities, they provide the portable water system to about forty one percent of the parcels within the town of Windermere. So that'd be close to almost half of the sixteen hundred parcels that we have. The remaining people are on private wells. So the master plan that we did evaluated and extending the system that. Orange County Utilities currently owns and operates to provide water to all parcels. So what we would do is we would build the system, then turn it over to Orange County Utilities to maintain, repair and operate. The drivers of this project, of course, were safety, environmental protection and reliability. And improve the safety, providing monitor safe drinking water supply and improving fire protection capabilities. It also protect the environment by reducing the number of wells. Especially close to the towns outstanding for water bodies. And improve the reliability, providing a pressurized system that does not require electricity to operate residential water pumps. So what we did was we looked at making sure that we had looped systems to maintain that flow and make sure there wasn't any blow offs. The only two blow offs that I believe there are is going to be on the end of West Second Avenue and probably the end of Jennifer Lane. But as we continue to move along and put in these lines, we'll see. What options would be out there to see if we could actually loop those systems in to make sure there's not going to be those blow offs. So the portable water system was broken into three different sections. You have the north phase, which is pretty much everything north of the canal. You had the central phase, which is broken up pretty much what people consider downtown proper. I'll show you the demarcation line between that and the south project, which is pretty much this area right here and everything that's to the east. So for the central phase, I can read all this to you, but it shows the amount of parcels, the amount of homes. That we're currently looking at the possibility of hooking up. And then here shows the central phase right here. And in the central phase, that's where we received about three point zero eight one million. For us to go ahead and improve the water system and also to lay lines where there currently aren't any. Unfortunately, when we took a look at this. With the prices that have increased significantly and town council approved the design of the two first real phases of this project. Is going to be used the majority of those monies. The balance of that, we'll take a look at where we can actually extend some additional lines to make sure people have access to that portable water system. And if not, then we'll go ahead and go back for state appropriations to see if we can get whether it's going to be phase two or phase three funded. And in the meantime, people that hook up or have lines extended. You know, that could possibly save us some monies, but we're still looking at putting in eight inch lines in some of the areas. To make sure that we can have a hydrant for access for. The fire department. So I'm trying not to lose my voice. The water north phase, again, that's pretty much all the HOAs north of the canal, which is over here. So you have Marina Bay, Stanci already has put a water and sewer, the manors and also. For some reason, I'm missing it, Mandy.
I was just going to ask. Lake Crescent and and yeah, so we're so we're all in there. I do have a question though. Is that something we. We as the neighborhood has to pay extra hookup to or is that just when once the town. Goes through that, we can hook up to it. Is it opt in or is it mandatory? That kind of, those are my questions.
Right. What would happen is when we extend the lines throughout an HOA or any type of residential area. We would make a stubout, which would just have a pipe extended to the right of way line and. Pretty much, you know, the Department of Health, whenever they give you a permit for a new well or repairing a well. They'll act, they'll ask you if you have access to portable water system. If you do, then they'll require you to hook up. So if you do need to hook up, what you would do is contact Orange County Utilities. They would set a meter. And then you would work with your plumber in order to. Connect to that system with the line, I believe that you had connected to your your well system. So there will be cost incurred, but it's not going to be a mandatory hookup initially, but if and when your well system goes out. Then you'd be able to hook into that system. Now, people would still maintain their. Well, system for irrigation because you really don't want to use the portable water system for irrigation purposes.
Right, right. No, I mean, I'm I'm really excited about this because tired of fishing water out of my pool every time I lose power. So. This is exciting. Do we have an idea? Because we're not the first phase. Is there is there a. An estimate date when this might get started?
We're waiting for the governor again to sign the budget and once he does, a portion of the north phase. Is in that budget. I think it's Miller three point two million dollars for this area. So it'd be able to take a look at the Willows, the manors, Marina Bay and some of the ancillary developments over there. To see where we're going to get the best thing for our buck to make sure that we're providing that service to as many residents with the money that we have.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm excited.
You're welcome. Again, we'll bring that back to town council once the budget is signed and have a proposal for you for. The design. Then the south phase, which is pretty much to the east. That shows you the area, which comes around here. Again, as part of the study that we did, we've submitted for appropriations and one of the comments that I received, you know, from some residents were. Why did the central phase get funding before the north and why the north get funding before the south? You know, we send all the appropriations up to the legislators. We don't rank them, but we had to put them in different phases because we didn't want them going ahead and. Giving us three million dollars for all three phases. So they're able to go ahead and. Pick an area and actually allocate those funds. So it's really up to the state where they're going to put the funds. So we're hoping that since they funded the central phase and the north phase. That we'd be able to get some funds for the south phase and again, start getting. More line extensions. And I know the the Bessie area is in real need of it. So probably phase one of that south phase would be more of town proper as opposed to over here.
I had a resident ask me since they saw at our last, you know, council meeting agenda packet that West Second Avenue and West Third Avenue is the. Portions that are going to move forward with the new IPOs. If Tree Board has looked at the impacts to trees along those roads from running new water lines.
West Second Avenue, I believe that we have been in constant communication with the Tree Board on that one because that one was vetted. Over the period of, I think about three years. For Third Avenue, once we do the surveying, we definitely take a look at which area has the least amount of impacts. And then the town will work with our arborist and also the tree board to make sure that any impacts, if they can be lessened, will.
Okay, and what it is the thought in general that is going to be closer. I know you got to do the drilling, but in general, the thought is like for the Bessie project, for example, it's three foot. A lot of that stuff's going to be in the three foot closest to the road. Is that kind of the mindset for everywhere in town?
It depends on again, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. And so I I think so for the the West Third Avenue and a lot of the side streets, you know, just west of. Of Main Street, we do, Robert and Brandy, I think we do want to walk that and kind of decide on a corridor preliminary with the town staff. And with the arborist and 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 the area that we would be looking at, Brandy, is the area between the road and the right of way. So it doesn't necessarily have to be in that three foot shoulder area of the road. But you know, just that area between the road and the right of way would would be beneficial. So yeah, that's the area that we'll look at.
Okay.
And we'll just have to decide whether, you know, it's on the east side, the west side or the north side or the south side. You know, we don't want to jog it around too much, so we want to kind of find a clear path on one side or the other, or as clear as can be with minimal impacts.
Right.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. And the wastewater study, again, this is another state appropriation that the town was awarded about three hundred seventy five thousand. The IPO came in a little bit underneath that. But again, this is going to take a look at. Getting the town on a centralized system. It looked like it would look at where we would connect, where we would have to send it to. You know, the size of the lines where we can gravity, where we can't gravity. It's just going to be a, as John would say, holistic study on the actual area to see what the flows are. You know. What the residents are going to need and then where is going to be the closest area that has capacity in their wastewater treatment plants? The K H A study should be completed within eighteen months. And what this does is it gives us a story to tell the legislatures. About, you know, why it's needed, where it's needed and how much it possibly could cost. That's what we did, the portable water system, and we're able to successfully get over, we're actually close to seven million dollars. I'm assuming that this project is going to be way above that with the amount of lift stations that we would probably have to put in. But it would get at least give us that first report that we would be able to take to them and hopefully they're get federal state dollars.
I have a couple of questions before we move on from that one. So. One thing is, is at the last Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board meeting, they were saying that there seemed to be some sort of a hang up in. Getting some sort of interlocal agreement with the town like they have with other towns. To provide us with some of the funding that they have, which, you know, the one thing they can, they're most concerned about. I mean, they're concerned about stormwater too, but. They're much more concerned about the septic systems. So do you know, like, there's not anything on our end. Holding them up from being able to do that, is there?
No, we've received funds. From. The Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Committee as recently as the Stormwater Study.
But we don't have like an interlocals agreement that they can continually give to. I'm not sure. I just, that's what Jim Henson was saying at the last meeting, so.
No, Mike Laura and I and Ty have been, you know, talking with them about various projects and then never said anything about interlocal. If there's an interlocal that has to be executed, I don't see why the town would. Not sign that agreement. I know that the Butler Chain of Lakes, they have to get approval from Orange County. But that's MSTU dollars that again, I don't see why we would stall them. Mike, any input?
Well, I I think what what we did was we submitted some projects to them for consideration and they're looking at it on a case by case basis. Not so much as an overall interlocal agreement like you normally see between. A county government and a municipality. They're looking at it from a project by project basis. So depending on. On the project needs, its significance and and what needs to be or what 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 it's going to be accomplishing. Primarily in from a stormwater end, they're looking at water quality. They would they would assess it based based on on their their priority needs. So and then at that point, when they make a selection, then they would, we would enter into a. A contract with 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 the advisory board on funding the project and 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 doing a. A kind of like a a joint joint funding agreement since the the cost share will be fifty fifty between. The town and and the Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board.
Okay. I'll I'll have him, I told him, you know, if there was anything hung up on our end to let me know and he said he was going to check into some stuff to see what else he could find. So I don't know, maybe there's something else that he's wanting to do more specific like to this, you know, interlocal agreement, more regular kind of thing.
Was that David Hanson you were talking to, Brandy?
Yeah, yeah. I always call him Jim.
He probably gets that a lot.
I know, and I always, oh, I always do it and then I think I have it right and then I say it wrong again, but. Go ahead.
You you if 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 you need to, you can have him also reach out to me and and we can discuss. On the side as well on on court quoting any efforts for any any potential funding between the the advisory board and the town.
Okay, I will. The other thing is, Robert, I know we had talked about it before. What the distance was from where the sewer lines have to be from the potable water lines and I don't remember it off the top of my head. But like if we're looking at impacts for the water line coming down second and third avenue. Are we, you know, going to potentially try to keep the the lines on the same side of the street for the sewer and the water? As long as we keep that distance apart so that it's less impacts and we're doing it all on one side?
Brandy, I think we we have to, we have to maintain the D E P both vertical and horizontal clearance requirements between. Water and and sewer. And so we have to just take a look at what. What the conflict may be and where best we can realign it because we, you know. With the with the sewers, it's going to be gravity unless it's a force main coming from a lift station. Which could be aligned any way you can, but but again, so much of it is going to depend on. On what kind of what kind of sewer systems can be going in the roadway, whether it be gravity or or a pressurized system.
And some of these areas too, we can take a look at selective borings to make sure there's minimal impact. As opposed to an open ditch. So, you know, when we get the study and then start getting further into the actual design. We can see where we can accommodate the distance requirements and also where we're going to have the most minimal impact.
Yeah, and I think.
Okay.
Add to what Mike said and what Robert just said, one of the things that's great about having a stormwater master plan or a sanitary master plan wastewater study. Is that it will allow us to understand where force mains are required and gravity systems are required. Because the gravity systems have greater requirements than force main systems required. In addition to that, the force mains will start to show where we may need to have pump stations and all the other things. So. Those are all the kind of stuff that we have to be able to show the residents. We have to be able to show separation of utility. We have to show. You know, how it's going to be installed and everything else. So until you have the study. You know, we can speculate all day long. So those are the kind of things that the study will actually bring out to help us become better educated in what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we're in the questions portion and comments, so. It's open for the council members to ask any questions or comments from either the engineers or staff.
I don't have any.
Yeah, Robert, nothing for me. It's the same as the project updates that I get monthly. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm glad you answered my questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Brandy, any additional questions?
I'm not specific to these projects, but just one thing to follow up with for the diverter because I've had residents. Asking me because we've had some recent incidences, as you know. I've had a couple of neighbors ask me whatever happened to us putting the no outlet signs up at. Eighth and that before people are even entering to come down here. And if there's been any update to whether or not Google them are updating any of their maps or if you guys have reached out to them again, because we are still having some issues down here.
Yeah, I and I can answer that, Robert. So we have ordered the signs, Brandy, based on Kim Lee Horn's suggestion on the signs. And then once the signs are installed, then we're going to have conversations with Google to be able to allow that to happen.
So what do the signs look like? Do they say no outlet?
There's varying signs and you and I can, I can show you that. Kim Lee Horn did a plan for advanced warning signs. Getting rid of stop signs and, you know, doing the right turn only signs. So I can, I can go over with that tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be fine.
All right, sounds good.
That's it for me, I think. That's it for me, I think.
All right, we'll have the babysitter for another fifty-six minutes, so. Um, if there's no additional questions, I'll enjoy my uh fifty-six minutes of quiet.
Enjoy, enjoy.
Sounds good. Thanks, Robert.
You deserve it, Robert.
Thank you all. And again, I'll be doing another one of these for the general public, uh just to answer the questions on when projects are. Um, hopefully gonna um be started, um and then the status of the proper, the projects that we're still currently trying to get funding for. Um, but that's all I have and um Mayor Pro Tem, I'll turn it over to you.
All righty, since there's no other questions or comments, uh let's adjourn this meeting at six fifty P M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.